Okay, we're back in our opening debate. The HeadlineSerber.com Public Candidate Debate here in Port Orange at Lakeside Community Center. We have Port Orange City Council District 2 Sarah Jones and Chase Tremont, two newcomers to elective office, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna sit with you and we'll just pass the microphone that way. Sarah Jones, please tell us about why you're running or look about who you are and why you're running, and I will give you three minutes.
Where's the clock?
Right in front of you.
Okay.
Okay, just go ahead. Help me.
It says 2:57.
It's all right. Don't worry about it.
Oh, okay. I'm Sarah Jones. I'm very pleased to be here. I want to thank everybody who's come to hear this debate. I came to Port Orange in 1995 with my husband. I had retired early as a chemist. I worked as a chemist in a public California, a job I enjoyed very much, and I retired early because my husband was 20 years older than I and I wanted to spend some quality time with him, and we came to Florida. And I enjoyed it very much, and as I was saying one night on the city council meeting, at that time a kayak fell off, and I will always remember the first day we put the kayaks in on the Halifax and we went up the Spruce Creek. And I saw it, it was the first time I had ever seen Spruce Creek, and I was absolutely amazed. And it's one thing that as I run for office to preserve the beauty that we have in this area. I have a long history of working in community activities and as an employee of Island County as a chemist, I was very active in my labor union, and I was a negotiator. I headed the negotiation team for a union that were with 3,000 employees. I'm accustomed to working with government. I'm accustomed to knowing that you sometimes you get the best you can and that you have to make compromise and that things are not perfect. I am a widow, and I therefore have, and I point this out, I do not have a lot, but I am not, I am no longer an active mother. I don't have, I don't have a job. I have the time and the energy and the expertise to do a good job. I do have, and I think most people notice it, and I bring it up front, I have a handicap. I was born probably with a stroke of birth, and so I left. And if this was a contest for the Olympics, you should not let me. If this is a contest for your brain and your ability to negotiate and figure out what is the right thing for the city, you should elect me. I'll be very frank, I also like government. It's a hobby of mine. I'm interested. I really like to do it. And if any, and I also want to run because I want to do the best for the people. I have a belief that every human being has an ethical responsibility to help other human beings as best they can. But I would be less than honest if I did not also say that I enjoy it. It's really something I like to do. Some people like to collect stamps. I like to do government, and I think that's because if you're interested in it, you're gonna do a good job. And I've met a lot of people, some of whom I agree with and some of whom I disagree with, but, and some of whom have taught me something and changed my opinion. And I really respectfully ask you to listen to me tonight, and I respectfully ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. You can pass the microphone over.
She has the line to her.
Mr. Tremont, there's three minutes, please. But you don't have to go to a bull's room, you don't have to.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chase Tremont. I just want to thank everyone for being here, thank you Sarah for being here. It's an honor to sit with you and discuss the issues tonight. I am a husband and a father of four children. We just had our fourth daughter three months ago, a little over three months ago, and I grew up in Port Orange. Born in 1979, our family moved here in 1984, I believe, back when there was 25, 26,000 people. So I've seen it grow quite a bit. I've seen it develop, and I've seen a lot of new people come in, go. I am extremely passionate about the city. Why am I running? I teach American history, it's first replacement right in Port Orange. And every year, and I've mentioned this before and I'll mention it here again tonight, every year I ask my students, raise your hand, how many of you guys trust the government? And nobody's hand goes up, as you can imagine. And that discourages me as a teacher, as an American, that our students are raising a generation of negativity where they cannot trust the people that are in position to make decisions for them and their futures. That's discouraging to me. So ultimately, I decided to get involved and run for office because I simply have a lofty goal. Call me naive, call me a man of great aspiration, whatever you wish. My ultimate goal is to bring honesty and integrity back into government. Because as a history teacher, I know there was once a time when people could trust the government. Because if you ask that question back in the 1950s to every student across America, how many of you all trust the government? Every hand's gonna go up. So there used to be a time that honesty and integrity did exist. Now, I'm not suggesting that there is not something that today. I'm simply suggesting that I want to be a part of it, and not just teaching history, but I want to be a part of making and changing history. As to why I'm running for Port Orange City Council, you know, my dad told me, in rest in peace, passed away a few years ago, was also a teacher in the area, my mom and he both, and she both, in DeLusha County, back, maybe back to the 60s. My dad told me a long time ago when I was a kid, he said, "Son, when you get in the car and go off with your friends somewhere, make sure you're the one behind the wheel." You know, and that's stuck with me all my life. In every aspect of my life, I've tried to carry that concept and that, that way of thinking into all the areas of my life. When I get behind the wheel inside of a car, I want to be behind the wheel. As an athlete, on the baseball field, if we needed an out, oh, I'd just pray in the day that they would hit it to me at shortstop. When the game was on the line, I wanted to be the one to take the shot. Not because I wanted the accolade and the praise, but because I knew that nobody, nobody has prepared themselves more for that moment than me. So when it comes to the future of my family and myself and my kids, I want to be the one making the call.
Chase, you can keep the mic. I'll leave you. I'm gonna put the first question to the recorder. What does the term nonpartisan mean to you?
Time is...
It doesn't matter.
Nonpartisan simply means no party affiliation, no party affiliation.
But what does that mean in terms of an everyday experience, in terms of reality?
Well, I think it means that when you're making decisions, policy decisions, based on whatever, well, yeah, when you're making policy decisions based on your city, you shouldn't be, I guess, bound to just what your party is going to say. And that's what's gonna make it ultimately influence your decision making.
Okay, next one, ask the microphone, Ms. Jones. Sarah Jones, can you explain nonpartisan? Do you agree with that?
Nonpartisan.
Okay, what is your interpretation of nonpartisan?
My understanding of nonpartisan and why it came about in Florida, because it doesn't exist in many other parts of the country, is that a decision was made that some of the positions at, and by the use of law, I don't mean less important, but at the home state of government, it's not so important about the larger policies that we might look at at the federal level, like Social Security. These issues are not important at the local level. At the local level, here in the city, what's important is that the sewers work, that the water comes out of the faucet, that when it rains, the streets don't flood, and that the parks are available for the children. Those are big issues of your government, and therefore they're not part of a partisan idea.
Let me, took the mic back to Mr. Tremont. What about the issue of party affiliation? There's a, a lot of people feel there's a disconnect between voters, where you've got Republican, Democrat at the state level and the federal level, and Ms. Jones, part of the issue of water. I can take an example, like in Michigan, where that town has water that's virtually poisonous, and that goes over at the federal level. Do you feel elections locally should be Democrat, Republican, whatever, or do you feel it should be NPA?
That's a good question.
And the reason why I'm asking you, because there's a very tense focus even now on Republican and Democrat, you know, party outlets, labeling them for candidates to the voters, regardless of the NPA or at the local level, so.
Sure. Well, if you're asking if I, you know, if I think it should be changed, then mine should be yes. I think it should be a party affiliation, because the fact of the matter is, they are already party affiliation races. They might call it an NPA race, but as something I've learned in DeLusha County politics, there's no such thing as non-party affiliation. Both parties are going to get actively involved, and it should, it should matter. I think voters should know what your political party affiliation is with, because how you believe ultimately determines how you make decisions, what your philosophy is, what your ideology is, what your political view is, and where you stand. That's going to how, that's gonna be, that's gonna determine how you answer questions, how you react on policy decisions, whether or not you're gonna be a taxing spend kind of person, or you're gonna keep lower taxes and keep government out of business. So yeah, I think that they should be changed, and all of the politics should be partisan.
And Ms. Jones, do you agree with your reply, Mr. Tremont?
I understand where he's coming from, and I agree with him that it's no secret if you run for a local office and you're affiliated with a party, everybody knows it, and everybody gets some support from that party. But I'll also tell you, particularly at the local government level, and I've been around, I have many more years than you, I have seen that at the local government level, you often find that you are in agreement with somebody on a local issue, whereas in national politics, you might be totally and absolutely disagreeing with them.
Let me ask you that, please, don't take it personally.
I'm not taking it personal.
Okay. Your, you talked earlier, you said you support a New York State retirees who, from the northern border. So the reason I ask that is to make the correlation about local politics versus state and national, where traditionally the Democrats would be supporting the labor unions and the movement of everyday workers, whereas the Republicans would be more of a bigger picture of the management and the ownership of the company. Do you think that that translates to the local level?
I think I just said, no, nonpartisan.
Correct.
And the reason I say that is because I have sat at the Port Orange City Council meetings for probably a full year now, and I have found myself thinking very closely with an individual and agreeing with him on city politics, whereas in national politics, I could not be in greater disagreement. And this is what happens, because local issues are local issues, and national issues are national issues. And often you find at the local level, and this has happened to me, that I am totally in agreement with somebody on the local level that I do not agree with on national issues. And I actually think the nonpartisan system has an advantage. At first I didn't, because I came from a state without it, and I think it does happen.
Mr. Tremont, we see a lot of people, especially in the news media, send us their endorsements from, you know, firefighters, or teams for the police, or realtors, or construction. Why is that so important to candidates if NPA doesn't matter?
Can you give a little more clarification?
In other words, there are people that will solicit, well, there are people that will solicit and boast that I've got this union or I've got that union, and then others will say, "Wait a minute, you're supposed, you're telling us you're a Republican, but you're pushing this union which supports the Democrats at the national level," and vice versa. So how does that trickle down?
Okay, good question. Well, first of all, number one, I've been going to meetings for perhaps two years, not one, and I think this notion of, this notion of living longer is going to be more beneficial than actively being a good decision maker. I may not have the experience in politics that my opponent has, which actually in today's day, I'm glad about that. I'm not a politician, I'm a decision maker. I make decisions every day that affect the lives of hundreds of teenagers, and the result, thousands of families in Port Orange and our very city. I make decisions every single day in the lives of my family, my children, my wife, and my future. So this isn't really an election about political experience, it's an election about who's the decision maker. Now, as it comes down to unions, you know, I don't have one union's support, not one union's endorsement, they're not endorsing me, not even the teacher's union does endorse me. And I'm a school teacher, and never, and never wants to vet it, but I would say it's interesting that the two unions that actively are strong in Port Orange, a police union and fire union, neither one of them have endorsed any of us. And the only union that has vetted me is the fire union, and they have got to endorse anybody. So all these other, the teacher of my opponent has received thousands of dollars. As a matter of fact, I'd say 40% of her contribution have come from unions all across the state, the rest of the 40% are from her own account, the rest of the 20% are from a few people in Port Orange, the rest of them around the country. People that endorse me are local people, the working people, and...
Okay. Well, let's just be clear for the audience and the people who see this on video, neither of you have been elected for a local office, for a senate, either of you.
That's right.
So if you say she's, may have more experience than you, she may be more politically active, but she does not, peasants out on the dais anyway.
Correct. I was just speaking of her own experience and she...
I have said, um...
You want to take the microphone, if you want to give a response, and then we'll move on to another topic.
I simply said that I have been active in government, and I have been active in organizations, in labor unions, and I understand politics. And your characterization of all labor unions as liberal is not entirely accurate, I have to just say that for the record.
Go ahead, you can give a response, I'll read mine.
Just a quick response, I didn't make a characterization of unions being a liberal at all.
I think, you know, the generalizations that people typically accept. Ms. Jones, let's talk about something else now. Let's talk about being on the dais. What is the role of a city council member on the dais?
One of the things that I have learned, because in my earlier years, I was accustomed to a strong layer type of government.
I'll take the mic.
Okay. Can everybody hear me? Okay. In Port Orange and in many of the local governments, it's a city manager type of government, which says that the council makes policy and the city manager executes that policy. One of the problems that I have with what goes on in the city of Port Orange is that many times it is the city manager that makes policy, and the city council sits there and lets it go by.
Could you give us an example?
I can give you an example.
Very great.
I wouldn't have come up with that idea if I didn't have examples.
One example, three.
Okay. The example is when Jake Johansson became, when Jake Johansson became city manager, one of the first things he did was cut off access to the city manager emails. In order to get them, you had to go through a long and lengthy process and before they were readily available. Now, that was a policy decision. The council just acquiesced, Jake said he was doing it, and they went along with it.
Did they take a formal vote?
They did not, they did not, they, and now they could have very well voted to agree with him, but they simply let him make the decision and they acquiesced to him. And that's one of the things that goes on in Port Orange that I think has to be changed. The city council has to recognize that they make policy, and it's entirely normal for a city manager to want to have as much power as he or she can. And it's necessary for a city council to be alert to the strengths and powers that they have and not let them become deluded, which has happened with Port Orange.
Okay, Ms. Jones. Mr. Tremont, you want to respond, and then give your definition of what it means to be on the dais?
Yes, you know, and I'm a little aware of that decision to remove the email brief file, and frankly, I agree, that should have been done, that should have been a policy decision made by the council. Years ago, Ken Parker was the one that pushed that through to initially put it on there, and the council agreed. So it was a college, it's a policy decision, it should have been a policy decision to remove it. But I think those examples are few and far between. Now, there are people that disagree a lot with what the manager does and what he wants to do. That's different from him enacting policy than as a, away from the approval from the, from the council. Council's role, simply put, to set policy, to give direction, to give vision to what the city, where the city wants to go, and keep accountable that city manager to do his job. Now, you know, I'll be honest, I'm not on the fence, but I can understand why some would want for a stronger mayor council to have a lot more, I should say, inspection and a lot more oversight to how the city works in other departments. It's certainly up for a debate, and I'm, and I concede merits to it, but as of, and that would require a charter change to do that. But as of right now, our job is simply to set policy, give direction to the, to the city manager, and then hold him accountable to make sure he's doing his job and he's making sure everybody else is doing his job.
All right. Let me ask you this, Mr. Tremont. Who do you as the ultimate boss when the city is doing official business on that dais? We understand that the city manager is the CEO, he does the day-to-day operations that are approved by the council, but who is the boss? Who ultimately is? Do you report to him? Does he report to you? You, meaning the collective boss?
Well, ultimately, the citizens of Port Orange are the ultimate bosses, but when it comes to decision-making, yeah, the council is the ultimate boss. Now, the manager has the power given to him to make decisions, but when it comes to, you know, and minor decisions, they don't need to be brought up to council, but big time decisions that are really gonna impact how the city operates and what it's gonna cost the taxpayers, absolutely, yeah, that should be, should be brought up before, before council.
Okay, thank you. Now, Ms. Jones, you want to respond briefly?
I do want to respond. The council is the ultimate boss, and the city manager does the day-to-day. He hires and he fires those under him. But what the council has to remember is they, the city manager serves at their pleasure, and they can hire and fire him, and that is the power they have over the city manager. So the other thing the council has to do, and that is be a very close watchdog of what goes on in the city. And if you read the city charter, you see that although they cannot make department decisions, they can go in and inspect, and they can watch very closely. And that's one function that a city council should do, and that takes a fair amount of time. But you have to be aware of what is going on in each department, and you have to carefully research the items that are put up to you for role, and that is a time-consuming job.
Okay, Ms. Jones, I'm gonna leave the mic to you for a minute. Tell us what you believe going to 2016, November general election, where you got, where the two of you, one of you would be chosen by the voters.
Actually, it's August.
Oh, August, well, that's a, Port Orange is a different scenario. Okay, so in the August 30th primary, which is your basic, your general election, tell the audience and the public what you feel is the number one priority issue for Port Orange right now?
The number one priority issue is controlled development. Development is going to occur in Port Orange, but it has to be controlled and carefully watched.
What does that mean, controlled development?
It means, for instance, that we don't want to repeat Dunlott and Avenue. Dunlott and Avenue occurred because too many businesses were put too close together with direct access to the highway. We don't, it is the type of development that occurred in the previous century. We don't, and as we develop and we permit new developments that are going to occur around I-95, we have to take into account the traffic patterns, we have to take into account the amount of green space, the parks, the proper facilities, and one of the, and that the quality of life in Port Orange remains what it is today. I was at one meeting with a lot of active city councils from Oak Hill and Smarter Beach and Edgewater, and we had a discussion about what is the duty of a city council person? And what of, and the final decision was, it's to ensure that the quality of life that we experience today, that many of them experienced as children, is retained for the next generation.
Right.
And this does not happen if crazy development goes on.
So your, so your priority number one is controlled development?
And, so that the quality...
You just want, right.
So that the quality of life, I got it.
Okay. Ms. Tremont, just briefly, do you agree or disagree, without too much talk, discussion, and then what is your priority number one issue for Port Orange?
Well, I don't agree with being my priority number one. I agree with controlled development. My priority number one, I think, should be at any level of government, in public safety, whether you're the president, whether you're the governor, county chair, or the mayor, your priority number one is to be the center. Now, that encompasses a lot of things. That encompasses not just police and fire and rescue, that also encompasses organized traffic pattern, that encompasses economic developments and economic redevelopment. If you don't, if you don't do something about the flight of areas, naturally, those areas are gonna bring a little more crime. We're also expected to give roughly 75,000, to top the scale of about 75,000 residents in the next decade, and with more people, comes more opportunities for crime. Public safety is priority number one, and that encompasses a lot of things, clean drinking water, organized traffic patterns, proper equipment and technology for police and fire ministry.
You agree with it, Ms. Jones?
I think public safety is important, and clean water, fishes, I think they're all important, and I think they're all part of the government. I don't think in the city of Port Orange, fortunately, the placing of the pride is currently a quality that has to remain that way. But I think development, and this took me a long time to appreciate this, that I would sit in the city council and I would watch them talk about landscaping and keeping a certain amount of look, and I thought, I used to think to myself, oh, they're doing it again, they're planting flowers. But that is what's very important, and I don't know how many of you realize, but the fact that Port Orange looks good affects the way people behave. People don't throw trash on the ground if they're, if they're surroundings look good. So I do think development in all aspects is very important.
We're running out of time rapidly, so I want to get a couple more questions. Back to you, Mr. Tremont, and keeping with the theme of public safety, as someone who's covered breaking news and the cops in courts for 20 years, I know the level of intensity of the Port Orange police department. If you're like 10 miles from the limit on Prince Road, you're getting a ticket, which is good. You know, some people also talk about homelessness, and the way you eradicate homelessness is you keep the neighborhoods clean, enforce your zoning and your building inspections. Do you agree with that?
I agree with how the...
In terms of not allowing homelessness to overwhelm what the situation of Daytona now has?
Sure. You know, homelessness is certainly, I know it's a hot button in DeLusha County, and the idea that Port Orange is not affected by homelessness is, I think, is incorrect. I think Port Orange does have our fair share of homeless people, and I believe we have a moral responsibility to take an active role in, in solving that problem and contributing. Now, I do believe that homelessness is a social service, and social services, where do they typically fall? Under the county. I believe it's a county issue. Now, if it's going to be put back on the cities, well, you know what? I don't want to turn my, turn my head to it. Ultimately, I want to be able to partner with the city, I don't want to leave Daytona stuck with everything, because we certainly do have our fair share of homelessness, and I'll tell you what, you know, with Riverwalk opening up, let me tell you, that's going to draw in some more. I've been over there three times in the past week and a half to, to Riverwalk, to walk around, to survey it.
And to be clear, what is the Riverwalk project? A lot of people know what that is outside of Port Orange.
Okay. Well, I think anybody watching this in Port Orange will know what Riverwalk is, but it's the whole development that's going on on Ridgewood and Halifax. So we're putting it in a park over there, we've got some development that's going to be happening. But as you have a park over there that's publicly owned, it has the propensity to turn into a place like City Island, and we certainly don't want that, because all down Ridgewood, you know, from Edgewater up to Ormond, it's a, it's a tough area to redevelop. So what we need to do is partner up with other cities, we need to have a place where we are participating. It's not the problem in Port Orange that it is in Daytona Beach, but it is a problem. And we can't ask people to leave the Riverwalk area unless we have a place to send them to.
Ms. Jones, do you agree?
Actually, I do agree. One, I think it's, it's a moral and ethical problem that we as human beings have to treat other human beings in a proper manner. Two, I think it's essentially a county problem, and I think several of the city, city councils have said that. It's not a problem that can be attacked city by city, and the cities may cooperate and may help, but the county has to approach it as a county, and we have to adapt it, and I don't, it is a problem of...
Folks, we're running rapidly out of time, I got a couple more questions for you. Mr. Tremont, let's get back to public safety. We talked about how Port Orange is a good community with the emphasis on good law enforcement, speed, traffic control, and safety. Let's talk about what a lot of people concerned about with the unions and the law enforcement, police and fire, with the pensions. Some people say they're not sustainable in the long run. I go to Tallahassee for the first time, there's concern about these pensions, not just fire markets anymore. What's your response to that? How would you be in on that dais?
Well, you can't answer that in 30 seconds, obviously, but I've had multiple conversations...
We've got some time.
Okay. I've had multiple conversations with our city manager and our finance director, just met with them for two and a half hours today, I've met with our, with our fire unions, and I've met with our police union about a dozen times, and it certainly is a problem, and it's, it's not sustainable as it is. There are a multitude of ideas that could be, that could be approached, but it's not an easy fix. If it were easy, it would solve already. You know, I think one option would be transferring to the FRS system, Florida Retirement System, which is beneficial to a lot of people in that situation. Now, you can't force them, now, you can't force them, that wouldn't be the right thing to do. There's all sorts of benefits for that, and get the city off that, off that payment, with the exception to ones that are still there. Now, you can't force them, now, you can't force them, that wouldn't be the right thing to do. There's all sorts of benefits for that, and get the city off that payment, with the exception of the ones that are still in. You don't want to mess it up with people that have been invested. Now, I'll tell you, one of the reasons that I believe the fire union has an endorsement of my opponent or myself, and the police hasn't endorsed anybody, because I've had a chance to talk with them, and I have not made promises. Promises are an insult now to voters and even union reps. They don't want to be promised things anymore. Why? Because they've promised things time and time again, and those promises don't come to fruition. So what they want, what I believe these representatives want, what these firefighters, what the police union, what the workers want, is fairness. Now, there's nobody that would be able to relate with them better than myself. I'm a school teacher. I know what it feels like to be underappreciated, undervalued, and underpaid. I have a thankful scout, so nobody can relate to them better than I. Yet, at the same time, I'll tell them, "Listen, I cannot promise you anything, but what I will promise you is fairness and honesty." And you'll have somebody sitting in that seat that knows exactly what you're going through, so I'm going to fight for it.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, like your response to, your reaction to what he's saying about the unions, about the pensions, are the pensions sustainable in the long run, and can you change that?
First of all, I want to respond to what you said, I think referring to the FRS, the Florida Retirement System that we talked about in Tallahassee. The Florida Retirement System is solvent. It is not in great need. And as a matter of fact, the three percent that the public employees are now paying into the system is going into the general fund, not into the Florida Retirement System. And so when Chase suggested that the local pensions, it is, I can see faces of disconcern out there. But the fact is, the money that's being paid by Florida employees, state of Florida employees, is not going into the FRS.
I believe the drop program is what I meant to say, and that's in the red now.
Okay, I'm not talking, you didn't mention the drop program, and I'm not talking about the drop. I'm talking about when the governor asks the state employees to make a contribution. That goes into the general fund. Two, Chase mentioned that one of the solutions might be for the local fire and police pensions to be absorbed into the FRS. I think that's a great idea. I know there's another gentleman sitting in the audience who thinks it's a great idea. The problem is, it's not as simple as the pensioners making that decision that it's acceptable. It's actually quite a costly venture for the city to do that. And that's one of the hesitations for doing it. So, and I also believe that we have to solve the pension system, that part of the public service is the promise of a pension for the risk and the salaries that they have. But FRS, I just want to emphasize that it is not an individual decision. It would have to be a decision made by the city of Port Orange, and it would be a costly decision. And it may be one they choose to make because in the long run, it's the best way, but it's not something employees want to suffer.
We got one last question. Now, turn up to you, Mr. Tremont. We had a long-term, a long-time city manager here who had the community's respect, the media's respect, and that was Ken Parker. And then all of a sudden, like a volcano, this thing about the water scandal came up. And then we had a very limited city manager who came and went. And the thing I'm trying to get at with that is, sometimes people describe people on the dais as rolling over or weak to the city manager, and then there are others that say, "Well, sometimes people in office are bullies, and people in the audience are bullies, and they've beaten them up, and they don't want to stay." We just stand on that as a prospective elected candidate, not a elected office.
We're assuming exactly that.
In terms of the bulliness or the rolling over, how do you balance that?
Right. Well, I mean, nobody wants to work for a bully, nobody wants to have a negative working environment. But you've got to understand, you've got two entities that are fighting to do their jobs. City managers try and part and do this job, council try and part and do their job. And it should be going in the same direction, but oftentimes it doesn't. You've got five other people up there that might disagree with the city manager, you've got two or three people. That's what happens when you bring a lot of different leaders together under one umbrella. You're going to have disagreements, you're going to have hickory, you're going to have chaos in some point. So ultimately, you want to find people that are going to work together, that are not going to be... You know, my opponent talks about rubber stamps for development. You know, we've had councils that are rubber stamped for development. I don't believe that's the case at all. You know, I think, I'm not going to give, insult our dais that much to say that, because I think if you talk to any developer in Port Orange, and we have a reputation all around town, it'd be a very tough place to do business here. So when you get into the situation of county manager versus the council, it shouldn't be a versus. They ought to be able to work together. No one should be a bully. At the same time, no one should roll over. If you're rolling over, then you're not doing your job, you're not getting the bang for your buck, and you're doing very great disservice to the citizens.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, do you want to respond?
I think basically your question was the change in government when they lost the long term.
Well, striking a balance after that, yeah.
Right, right, right. I don't think the scandal is, I think what happened was in Port Orange, for a long time, you had a city manager, Ken Parker, who was a very strong leader. And then when he retired, there's a bit, whenever a very strong leader leaves, there's a vacuum, there's a period of turmoil, there's a period of change. And a lot of the department heads, I think it was more or less a period of change that they chose to leave, that they had worked under one system for most of their career, and they were able to retire, and they chose to retire. So we're now looking at the city of Port Orange, which is essentially restructuring itself. And it's restructuring itself, I'd like to speak in a way that is different and maybe reflects the times, and there's one thing about it that I don't like. And that is now that as we go out and we look for new department heads, which is understandable, we seem to be getting the young professionals who go from, their allegiance is to their job, not to the city. The older time professionals more or less came up to the ranks. And one thing I would like to see is when we look for new department heads in the future, rather than looking at a young person or a person who comes in and interviews, and they have a history of going from city to city to city, and the city of Port Orange is more or less a stop along the career path, that we seriously look in the departments that they have, in the staff on hand, to see if there is a person in-house who can also take that department head and consider that person, because that person has more of an allegiance to the city than somebody who's just come to...
Thank you, Ms. Jones. We're going to do our closings now. Two minutes max. Ms. Jones, you go first.
First of all, I want to thank, where's my clock?
No, no, no.
It went away.
Just go ahead, you can...
Oh, okay.
I'll let you know.
I want to thank everybody in the audience that came. I want to thank them for listening to both of us, and I hope it's been an interesting and educational experience for you. I am very much dedicated to the city of Port Orange. I enjoy the city of Port Orange. I, my opponent spoke about my funding, and I want to speak to that funding that when you receive a sum of money from a labor union, which I certainly have, you are receiving the sum of money from individual workers, from men and women who have donated out of their pocket small amounts of money to make the large pool. When you receive a large sum of money, such as a thousand dollars from two trucking firms, you are receiving a sum of money from one gentleman who owns a big business. I really would like...
Ten seconds, ten seconds.
I would like to close very much and...
Oh, I'm sorry, you got a minute, I apologize. I didn't spread this far. Go ahead.
Okay. I would like to emphasize one other thing that I would like, it's one of my issues on my website. I would like to see the city, when they put items up for bid for services or construction, that they give a preference, not a guarantee, but a preference to local contractors and local providers, so that our tax money stays in the locality and helps the economy. I would also like to see a preference given in bidding when there are large construction jobs to firms that have an apprentice program in place. These firms, they need not be union, but the firms that have these programs in place deserve that preference, because they are making a profession in the trades available to men and women. And again, I respectfully ask every one of you to consider me and to vote for me on August 30th for early voting or mail-in voting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
And it's apology, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Tremont, you have about two minutes.
Okay. Again, and I echo my opponent's statement. I appreciate everybody for being here, thank you, sir, for joining us for the night. I do want to say with all due respect, though, in regard to the comment about unions supporting you being that they're from individuals. You received a $250 contribution from the teachers' union, I paid into the union all last year. So I assure you, I did not contribute to your campaign. These are decisions that are made by the people at the front end. They're not the average workers that are making that decision, so just wanted to state that there clearly. You know, my race is simply, you know, as I mentioned before, you know, public safety is the priority number one. If people aren't safe, it doesn't matter what priority number two and three and four and five is. And again, that entails a lot of different things. But ultimately, I'm the guy that's going to want representing you, and here's why. I know what it's like, and I take my political principles into this public office. I have no interest in raising taxes. I know how to live within my means. I'm a school teacher, I have four children, we are paycheck to paycheck. I know what it feels like to watch that deal rise every time I fill up my gas tank. I know what it feels like when it goes to the gut of my stomach when I look at my receipt at the end of buying groceries. I know what it feels like to count the pennies in my little jar at the end of the month and see how much I have left to hopefully take my kids out for ice cream. There's nobody that can relate to the average citizen like I. My opponent has talked many times about the little guy getting a break. I am the little guy. I'm the guy that here is trying to represent all the others that are just like myself. I want to keep Port Orange beautiful, I want to keep it safe, and I want to keep it very affordable to live here. So I'm Chase Tremont, I appreciate your vote, I appreciate your support.
Ten seconds.
Mr. Tremont made the comment about the teachers' union. I think it says something, when the teachers' union does not support a teacher and comes and supports...
The number one man, the floor.
It says, "When the teachers' union chose to support me, and they chose to support me because I have supported the teachers, I have walked with the teachers, I have spoke for the teachers in all of their needs."
All right, thank you. Very grateful to you, though.
Well, I didn't expect you to go to the end of my closing, but I'm happy to. I am a teacher, okay, and I was a member of the union. And the fact of the matter is, I had to drop out of the union, and I wrote a letter to the union saying, "I cannot afford the dues anymore." You know why? Because it's half of what it costs performing every month. That's why I'm not a member of the union anymore. So it's unfortunate that the unions have decided to play politics in that seat. We didn't bring in the NPA in the political realm, the unions did in this case. So that's what happened here. I might have worked for the teachers, I am a teacher, and they never vetted me.
Has everybody on the dais here had a fan on this? They ended?
There's no sense digging in the mud anymore.
I want to thank, on behalf of headline surface public, I want to thank you, Mr. Tremont, and I want to thank you, Ms. Jones, for taking the time and, you know, for expressing yourselves. I apologize for a few mistakes here and there, and I've done very well for two newcomers to elective office. Good luck to both of you, and God bless you. Thank you.